Call this meeting in order, all rights for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with one justice, as it is for all.
Can I get approval of the agenda?
Mr. Mayor, before we begin, I just wanted to let you know, we apologize for all the last-minute adjustments to the agenda. This month is just kind of a crazy month with collective bargaining unions, as well as some last-minute Medicare things that we have to work out with Central Care. So, the thing to add tonight was 7H, a memo of understanding between the City of Melrose and Central Care relating to Section 304B, I think it is.
Any questions, concerns? Motion to approve, please.
Move.
Second.
Second.
I'm here, say aye.
Aye.
Closed, motion carried. Three, open forum, would anybody like to speak? Say anything? All right. Consent agenda. Approval of minutes, bills, purchase orders, approval of the investments, can I get a motion to approve?
So.
Give me a second.
Second.
I'm here, say aye.
Aye.
Closed, motion carried. FiveA, public hearing, it is 6:03. Public hearing, City of Melrose, Stearns County, State of Minnesota, proposed establishment of municipal development district number 11 and creation of redevelopment tax increment financing district. Would you like to speak?
Go ahead, thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. So, due to a certification timing issue for TIP district 11-1, the city is looking to certify a TIP district for the 400 block, as well as, which contains most of the downtown area and Craft Lot. The reason for the decertification of the old district and the recertification of this one was due to a certification timing issue, really had to do with the 400 block building's values being taken off the tax rolls. The old district was decertified, recreating, would preserve the right for the city to create a redevelopment TIP district, which this one set up. Any questions?
Is there any questions from the public for, or any concerns?
Mr. Mayor, I just have one thing to add to the official record, I have a copy of the affidavit publication that was published in the beginning.
All right, we will be taking action on this in a little bit, it is 6:05. Okay, reports, general fund, quarter.
All right, for the third quarter, our revenues are under budget in total, they're about 68 percent. And a big portion of that is our second half of our property tax and our state aid comes in December, and that makes up a big bulk of our total revenue to the general fund, about 72 percent. Expenditures are running under budget, we had budgeted for a summer intern that we didn't fill, we had employee resignation that we filled in-house, insurance came in under budget, so those all, in total, were leading to expenditures being under. We had a few things running over, some maintenance costs due to issues that came up with our server that needed to be replaced. And then also, one thing to note, we had received third quarter revenues for building permits, but those had not been dispersed out to the building inspector until October. And we also have not, at this point, had to pay the police contract fees from Stearns County, so that will be coming yet. For MADA, the revenues and expenditures have both exceeded the budget by this point. The general fund has budgeted a transfer that will be made in December, so any costs that we have set up as a project with a TIP fund, or anything where we get reversed, we move those out, so any general costs that don't yet have a fund associated with them run through MADA. Ambulance revenue is at about 84 percent, and expenditures are at 70 percent total. There have been more runs this year, it's been a busier year than we originally planned so far. In total, this year, the ambulance has charged off a total of $17,629.62, and we've received about $6,761.87 from the Department of Revenue and our collection agencies. So when we can make collection on those, we certainly try. The ambulance fund also will still make a transfer to the general fund in December for administrative fees, and there was some maintenance over budget due to the maintenance fees for the Lucas machines that they bought last year. The fire department, this fund, a lot of the activity comes at year-end. The payments for salaries are paid in December, and the payments from the city and the townships for their contract services are also paid in December, so it usually runs kind of low all year. We run on fund reserves and then get the payments at the end of the year. Vehicle expense in that fund is a little higher, there were some repairs needed on the fire truck in 1992. Special revenue fund, these are just our, like, our senior activity center, the Tri-Cat Bus, the Yellow Bus, or Bike Program. There hasn't been a lot of activity throughout the year, so those are kind of running right where we'd expect. And the capital project funds, the revenue is slightly under budget and expenditures are at about 86 percent. For this one, a lot of the capital projects were done in the second and third quarter for the street projects, so that's where the bulk of those happened. And debt service fund, we've made all debt service payments for the year already, and then we'll receive our second half of the tax levy in the end of the year. Anybody have any questions?
For next fiscal year?
Uh-huh.
Probably not everybody, at least we got our preliminary 2018 tax, taxes available today.
Okay.
If you could explain what the numbers today are, if they're not certified numbers?
Sure.
I know one of mine went up quite a bit accordingly, but I know the certifying next month.
Yeah. So we have to give a preliminary tax levy in September. And how it works is, at that point, you cannot go up, we certify our final levy in December, so you can't go any higher than what you do in September, but you can go down. So a lot of times, we have some cushion in there in case between, when we're looking at the budget in August, September, and when we finalize it in December, if there's projects that come up, or anything that we need some room for. So our practice has been and will be this year also, that our final levy that we'll do in December will be consistent with last year, most likely.
Thank you, Kristen. Police Department, your report, Jeff?
Good evening. Melrose Police Department, monthly statistics for October 2017. Traffic-wise, a total of 21 citations were written for the month of October of 2017. Verbal warnings, a total of 77, written warnings, six. For the month of October, we received 329 calls or requests for service. At this time last year, October 2016, we received 316 calls or requests for service. At the end of October 2016, we ended up with ICR 3,421, and at the end of October of this year, we ended up with ICR 2,943. Agency assists, for the month of October 2017, we received 32 agency assist calls, and so for the month of October, the difference would be, this year, we're up 13 calls from last year, but overall, we are down 478 calls.
Questions or concerns? City attorney report, Scott?
I see my report, there's several items noted. The 400 block, that's the business subsidy issues that we dealt with at the last meeting, just kind of getting picked up on the report now. Zoning ordinance, been working with Mr. Creelman, who's got a proposal to go to planning zoning to make some modifications to our non-conforming use regulations. We've got some concerns that the way they stand now, they're not completely in compliance with state law, and make sure that we get them lined up properly. New project, the East Substation, bids were open for the new transformer, and spent some time reviewing, there were some questions, comparing what bid said and what our spec said, looked at those and determined everything was in order. But then finally, we've been monitoring, out by Rose Park, there's the property, that's the park itself, and then there's some surrounding property, formerly owned by the company that owns Rose Park, that taxes haven't been paid for. And we've got confirmation from Stearns County that the tax forfeiture process is complete, so there's some property out south and east, or excuse me, south and west of Rose Park that has titles going back to the state, that will be coming up for sale, and so we're looking at the idea whether the city should be interested in trying to pick up some or all of that property out there before it gets put on the market. Any questions?
Just a quick clarification in regards to the process for tax forfeiture, can you just talk the council through that, just briefly, because this will be on the agenda in the coming months, so I think it's kind of important to understand what the process is.
The timelines are a little different, but if you don't pay your property taxes, you are, you know, the delinquent notice, what's actually happened is that there's been a judgment entered in favor of the State of Minnesota, and you have a redemption period, and the period varies depending on if it's residential property or commercial property. Off the top of my head, I can't tell you what those numbers are.
It's seven years and three years.
Seven years and three years. It's longer for residential, if it's your homestead. Commercial property, they don't give you as much time. So, these properties, taxes weren't being paid on them, maybe three years went by, and so at that point, you know, the title is in the state, you know, previous owner just, they've lost ownership for not paying them the taxes. The title is in the State of Minnesota, but so far as managing tax forfeited properties, that's, the county, Stearns County does that for properties in Stearns County. So the next step will be, the county will look at two things, they have to determine if any of that property should be classified as conservation, and then also, they've got to fix a value on it. Once they've done that, they'll, if the city is interested, essentially, we got first dibs of the four, and we go out to the public. We can let them know that we're interested. We would have the option of either just paying the value that the county board puts on it, so you pay the market value, you get a deed from the State of Minnesota, the city would own it. There is also an opportunity to pick up the property at no cost, but we have to then agree that this property is being picked up for city use, and there'll be a restriction in the deed from the state that says that we only get it for city use. And if we stop using it that way, then it reverts back to the state. So the idea is that we don't get to go into the real estate speculation business, we don't get to step in early and say, oh, that's a good price, we'll pick that, we'll grab that for nothing, and then turn around in a couple of years and sell it and make a profit for the city. So that's why that restriction is in there. And so part of it is looking at these, you know, we'll look at the numbers they put in, and we'll look at, if they determine some land is, should be classified as conservation, and that would be a restriction in the deed to anybody that acquired the property, it has to be kept as conservation, they put a restriction on what you can use it. And they're looking at mostly trying to protect wetlands, and yeah, there's some pretty low spots out there, there's, I'm thinking that there's going to be part of that identified as wetlands and conservation, and there's restrictions. So that's all coming forward. Late winter, early spring, we'll have to, you know, make some decisions as to whether we want to, by that time, the county will be ready to talk about potential transfers, or do they put it up for sale to the public? And at that point, we'll have to make a, look at, do we, does the city want it, and do we want it without strings, or do we pay the going rate, or do we want to pick it up, and then with the understanding that it's going to remain city property and we're going to use it for some municipal purposes.
And Scott, with that, I think there is a 15-year window on that scenario, so if the city uses it in perpetuity, well, for 15 years, after 15 years and one day, the city can then turn around and sell it, is my understanding, if there's this property.
I'd have to take a look, I don't think that's automatic, I think you still have to go back to the state and ask them to remove.
To release it?
To release that covenant.
All right.
Yeah, I don't think it's 15 years and then it expires, I think it's, come back in 15 years, and we'll look at taking that restriction off.
And in our MADA meeting last Thursday, we voted to look at, trying to pursue it for, you know, since we have rid of the City 20 over there by Kirky Store now, for the pole yard and for the snow, that's one of the things that Gary thought we could have a use for it, so I think they said to check on it and pursue it.
And just for, you know, information purposes, I mean, this same property is the one that had that storage unit that was in bad shape, and earlier this year, we went through the process to go up there and clean that up and abate it, and this foreclosure process was already running, and so we did not take any action to try to put an assessment against that property, because it was going to be going tax forfeiture anyways. And there was potentially some interest by the city to pick this up, like, keep it available, so. Anything else?
Well, I guess, I mean, on that note, I've got a little hanging up on city government, just, you know, obtaining a property for basically the back taxes. It's kind of a, I don't know what phrase I'm looking for, but it's kind of a backdoor to government obtaining property, in a way.
Yeah, and the...
I guess, to me, I guess I would like to see the public have a chance, if somebody has something that they could use it for, develop it for, it's right on interstate, it's prime light industrial property, I believe, or I don't know if it's commercial or industrial or what.
In looking at that property, you don't get that money just for the unpaid taxes.
No, it would have to go to public action.
I think what you're trying to get at was, it'd be better on the tax rolls than it would be.
The county is going to do an appraisal and put a value on it, and that's what it'll sell for, so they're trying to, we'll see what their appraisal comes in, and you have to make your own decision if you think that's a value that you do want to pay, or if it's too high. But, you know, they're looking at a market, market rate. There also, that property's got some serious challenges. I mean, there is a piece of it along the interstate where that shed is, that's on some nice high ground. When you start, you know, going west and north along Craft Drive, and you're pretty much in a peat bog, the, when we put Craft Drive through that area, I think we had to clear out six, eight feet of peat before we got to the solid base that we could start building the road up on, so.
Yeah, there's, I think, what is it, 13 acres or something, or, or there's only like eight pieces of over something, I don't know.
I don't even know, I don't even know that that goes high as eight.
It's probably four acres or something. But, did you say they tried to get market rate if they sell it?
You know, the only...
So they're all, sort of, it's over a bunch of taxes, but they're going to sell it for a premium.
I mean, if you look at, there were some tax forfeited lots east of, the east side of town, behind the school.
Yep.
And they started out pretty high on those, it wasn't just for the back taxes, now they didn't move and they started coming down, and they approached the city about, because we've got assessments out there, would we, from some of our assessments, because they want to move them, they aren't selling, so they, don't ask people how much it goes.
It doesn't seem right that governments, especially in this country, can take the property away from someone, given that the tax are, and then sell it for profit, basically, for more than what they supposedly owe a tax for. That doesn't seem right. It should be, you know, I don't know.
I have no problem with losing the property for nonpayment of taxes, but they'll have to pick it up with the legislature as to...
And that premium, you should have a premium, that should come back to the city mouths.
Well, I suspect that the...
If they make that money, it's fair.
Stearns County is just an agent. Whatever money's there, they'll probably get a little handling fee, eventually it'll roll back to the state or the sole, I mean, Stearns County doesn't pocket that, and we don't pocket that, they're just, they own it, they're the ones that get it.
My issue's more, not that fundamental, it's, if you come from the west, that's the gateway from the west, and to put a pole yard there seems really anticlimactic as you come into the city.
Yeah, especially on the corner.
Right, or a snow, or whatever.
We'd rather see some development, whether that's market rate housing, or something, you put four acres.
Nice looking store sheds, or something, I don't say nice looking because of what's out there, but, whatever, but something that's...
There's multiple conversations that need to occur before this, at the various planning commissions and MADA boards, and there's also some creative solutions in regards to how that could be sliced up and diced up, and so there's a lot of conversations.
A lot of disagreement, but I guess my point is, fundamentally at this level, if it is a non-starter, don't waste all the time, that's all, yeah, and if it is a starter, then yeah, go through the exercise, but...
I guess that'd be a question, is if, maybe, you know, like a pole yard, if you would be willing to pay the, are you willing to pay the rate that the county wants, just to have some development, you know, the city's in there for, or industrial parks, fill up, and we don't have a lot of spaces to show people that come, and we're looking at what's available, and the added to the inventory to show for developer, create out right on the interstate.
We're always from there, so.
Yeah. We'll have to see what they want for it.
Real good. Action, resolution number 2017-68, resolution promoting the use of intrastate mutual aid agreements, that would be with more of the police department, correct?
Yeah, it is, and what it is, is the county would like to see mutual aid agreements between the police departments. There's a mutual understanding of how things work and share resources already, however, the county just wants to formalize that, just like we do with the fire departments. And so that's all this is, there's no money that would be exchanged, it's just saying that you're going to help us when we help you, and you're going to help us back and forth. Chief Most has looked at this, I've looked at it, Patty's looked at it, and we don't see any challenges with the way that the resolution is written, and we're also seeing the other cities approve it. I can't tell you which ones have all approved it yet, but I've been told that the other cities have been approving it already.
Any questions, or can I get a motion to approve?
I'll make that motion.
All right, can I get a second?
One second.
All right, I'm here, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. B, Tri-County Action Program 2018 Transportation Contract Renewal, is that supposed to be 2019? Or, yeah, I suppose it's only one year, so, all right.
Yeah, it's a one-year contract, just a renewal, as we've done in the past, there's no rate changes from what we had before.
Any questions, or can I get a motion to approve?
What was the donation?
I have the resolution in front of me.
What do you have? Our city donation part, this isn't the donation part, though, this is the contract, it was the city donated 25, and then we said we may have $1,000.
Donation part of it, it's quasi.
Yeah, quasi, yeah.
I'll make the motion.
Can I get a second?
One second.
I'm here, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. SevenC, Resolution Number 2017-69, approving the establishment of development district number 12, the adoption of a development program related there for the creation of the tax increment financing district number 12-1, and adoption of the tax increment financing plan related there, too. This was from our public hearing, is there any questions or concerns?
On the agenda here, it says that the, we're doing this because of the state grant, correct, because it can't, couldn't be TIP if it was...
No, that actually has nothing to do with it, it's just because of the timetable in regards to the adoption of these things. If we were to adopt it, we would have lost additional time in that district, so that's what that was about. So the abatement, so the city can still decertify the district if abatement becomes a better solution for that lot, but we still wanted to maintain the flexibility of having this district as is.
And so does it make sense to have that fair landmass in the single district?
So you have a TIP, let me see here, you have the TIP district, and then you have a TIP, I mean, creation of a TIP district number 12, and TIP district number 12-1, so you have a district, and then you have, within the district, you have a smaller, smaller area, and that's what this is, which is strictly of that.
This is all redevelopment?
Yeah, which is the full, gives you the maximum life expectancy of that, 25 years. If you, but then you also still have to adopt a business development agreement to give, to narrow that down to five years, or 10 years, or whatever you think is appropriate.
Within the district, whether there's different lots in the district, it can be used, once the district starts to, just say next year, does that start the clock on the district in its entirety?
Nope, just within that one particular area.
No, okay. And then the last question is that, because this has already been done once before, the consultant is doing this pro bono?
She is. Yep.
Can I get a motion to approve?
Move.
Give a second.
No, sir.
All right, I'm here, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. D, front-end loader replacement.
This is on our five-year capital plan, this was a 20-year-old front-end loader, we've had a lot of, we reviewed it in-house, Gary and his crew have... Uh, we've had a lot of, uh, we've reviewed it in-house. Gary and his crew have looked at it in detail. Uh, they've also consulted with the county who has recently gone through the exact same process as we have. A very in-depth review, looking at the various different models and brands and, and having looked at that through the state bid process, it was narrowed down that the Volvo is the best, uh, vehicle for, for the department. Uh, this includes, as outlined in the agenda, uh, we're also gonna be trading in our old one that we have. Uh, it's, it's a good piece of equipment, the old one, however, it's, it's reached its maximum life. I mean, these guys use this, this thing, uh, over eight weeks a year. It's just crazy how many hours they've put into this thing. So it's staff's recommendation to go ahead and purchase it. Uh, the purchase price is a hundred and forty-five thousand, four hundred and twenty dollars. After the trade-in, we had originally budgeted a hundred and sixty, so it will be under budget. If we approve the purchase tonight, we would be able to get it, was it March, Gary?
February.
February sometime? Uh, that we would take possession of it. The reason we'd like to take action tonight is so that we can qualify for the twenty seventeen rates. The schedule versus the twenty eighteen, which we were told is gonna be between a one and three percent increase. So if we take action tonight, we'll save one to three percent, depending on what the state bid contracts come out at, so. Gary and his crew have really looked into this, uh, quite a bit and, uh, it's, it's recommended to move forward as presenting.
We have a hundred and sixty in budget next year for this?
Yes.
And with the trade-in, it would be a hundred and forty-five?
Yes.
I know I asked quite a few questions about this earlier. I had thought that we're getting rid of a nice piece of, um, I think it's a nice piece of program, but like that at, you know, a decent price may be presenting to the local construction, um, businesses. See if they have any interest in it for the trade-in value. Obviously, the, the sale price doesn't change, but, uh, I don't know if that's even, uh, I know we have discussed.
One of the options that we think, which we've seen done in the past is that the, um, and I don't, is that NUS, is it NUS? I believe it's NUS. NUS Equipment who's purchasing this from or selling us and purchasing our old one, uh, they, they will do like a one-for-one swap. So, uh, the transaction would actually occur between the other, between NUS and the private sector person if they're interested. One of our local vendors were, one of our local contractors were notified of this, uh, of this asset, that it was, that it was on the market of sorts, uh, to let us know and we didn't hear anything from that particular contractor, so.
Yeah, so, uh, maybe if we could just talk to the-
NUS?
Yeah, NUS. Sure. Ask them if one of our local contractors wasn't interested in that, wants to deal those finances, if they'd be willing to sell it back to a contractor at some price.
Sure, we'll do that.
If they're, if they're interested. And Gary's got all the quirks, uh, written down about the loader itself, so.
Have we been spending much on maintenance on this? And obviously, we've depreciated out over twenty years and that's what it was.
We've actually depreciated out over ten years. As Gary and his crew have been kind of getting this thing along pretty well over the past ten years, uh, we're starting to see some dollars invested into this asset and it's to the point now where it's, it's time to move on, on that, on that asset. And we could, I could talk to you offline in regards to what some of those things are, um, but it's, uh, I think now's the time to sell it, based upon what I'm hearing, so.
All right, any other discussion? Can I get a motion to approve?
I'll make that motion.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Um, favors the aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Four hundred block funding craft lot development.
Good evening. Uh, at the November ninth MATA meeting, there was a discussion held about, uh, remaining four hundred block funds and where those could be directed. The discussion was had that, um, you know, these, these funds could possibly be used for several different projects in the four hundred block. Uh, could be possibly used for, um, a project on the craft lot. Um, and the MATA board determined the best course of action was to begin discussion with developers, whether that be past or new, and look at projects as a case-by-case basis and possibly use the legislative funding for possible developments on those sites. And so that would just, this would just add to more tools that the city has to possibly get development in that area. Um, so, you know, could, could use TIP, we could use this as an abatement form, there's several different ways we could use it. Uh, but the MATA board directed staff to just bring this to the council and, you know, just discuss whether staff should begin conversations with, uh, past developers or, um, continue discussions with developers that they've been having and possibly consider four hundred block legislative funds for redevelopment if, uh, if any of these projects start gaining any ground, so. Any questions?
Tony? Josh, your day?
I guess we're gonna use funds. I'd like to see it used on the craft lot before the four hundred block, because it's what the city owns and to get that back in the tax roll would be better use, I guess, of these funds in my mind versus something that's already privately owned. That does.
Say your motion.
I'll move.
All right, can I get a second?
Second.
All right, first and a second. Um, favors the aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Billboard.
Also at the November ninth, um, MATA meeting, MATA had a, um, discussion about the billboard that was destroyed in the, um, the windstorm this fall. Um, it's the billboard that's over by Sterns Electric on the freeway there. Uh, and MATA recommended to the council that replacing a, uh, one-sided sign with a two-faced sign so they could be seen from both the east and the west would be the preferred way to go. Uh, and if there's numbers there, the two-sided structures, uh, that includes poles, lights, facing blankets, et cetera, uh, would be about twenty-five thousand dollars. The one-sided structure would be about twenty-four thousand dollars. Uh, and so, uh, you know, there's the price points, the, I was, I did reach out to Ferguson also to get another number for, uh, possible salvage and repair for the, uh, billboard that was destroyed. We'd still need new poles for it. I don't know, there's a possibility that we might be able to save the lights, however he recommends to use LED lighting, that type of thing. But he, the quote that we got earlier just this week was just around fifteen thousand dollars. So that's to, you know, just salvage the sign that we had, put in new poles, put up a one-faced sign. But again, MATA's recommendation was to order the two-faced sign, so. Any questions?
How many years have we had that billboard?
I don't know.
Good?
I don't know.
Scott?
Over twenty years, so.
I honestly don't know if I, uh, ever lost it. Well, somebody said something, well, first one's made it, uh, said something, well, we're basing it. So that's where I'm gonna.
Of the last, in the last ten to twelve years of the skins, how many of them have been school-related?
Twice.
Twice. Would you be willing to ask the school to chip in a little?
Well, I-
I'm just asking.
Yeah, I think the, uh, I, I think the idea for, for this, uh, the sign to have total control by the city is, I think, probably the preferred method. Uh, if we wanted to, say, partner with the school, they'll all put a skin on it, then maybe rent space on it. I think that might be a, a little better way to, to look at something like that.
That's fair.
But the, the cost for this and the two, something like, for example, the, uh, we're getting, Mike was able to negotiate a price, a reduction on the skins. So if we put up two skins instead of twenty-two hundred, it's like fourteen, I think, there's something like that, fourteen hundred dollars for two separate skins. Um, and we could maybe approach the school and see if they wanna put up one of those skins, you know, at their cost, obviously.
Yep.
But.
Actually, I guess, uh, you know, when I said this, like, well, if we have fifteen thousand proceeds, if we throw another potentially fifteen at it, replace what we had, well, you know, billboards were, maybe they're still one of the best ways to go. But maybe there's other ideas out there. We don't have to do this tonight. We could, uh, brainstorm some other ideas where we could maybe more, maybe more effectively spend the money. Obviously, there's maintenance costs with a billboard. You put skins on it, uh, still gotta maintain, pay electric bill and stuff like that. To me, I think, honestly, what we all, what we hear about, we hear about purchase equals, we hear about water dollars, people see on their state. I don't know about that billboard so much as, uh, you know, how many people does a billboard bring into town? We have, what is, what is our slogan? Strong, diverse, connected? It's, Facebook is kind of more prevalent nowadays than billboards in my opinion, so. My, my, my opinion would be that we table this until, because it obviously, uh, that doesn't need to get done today.
Is there a shop wipe on the insurance check?
Uh, yeah, there is. What would happen is, um, uh, we wouldn't be able to secure the funds until the council actually makes a decision if they're gonna replace it or not, according to what I've heard from, uh, the, the adjuster, Mark, Mark Evanson.
We get a definite answer on that.
The, we'll still get funds, but we can get more funds if we, uh, the way, the way this is, is the, is the fifteen grand, fifteen six forty-six is what we'll get, uh, for total replacement of it. The way the league works is a little different than, uh, a traditional homeownership policy is like, we get the cash, you can use it if you don't want to or not. Well, it doesn't quite work that way. I'll have to get a little further understanding in regards to what would actually get if we didn't do anything. I don't, I don't know.
Right. Can you ask if we can apply it to something else that's similar in nature?
Advertising dollars, marketing dollars?
Marketing dollars, something.
Okay.
All right, website building.
Do you tell them?
I don't know.
I don't, I think it's not a bad idea to brainstorm and maybe that's.
Right.
They probably wouldn't get in this year anymore.
Well, they said December, I hear.
Yeah, they could do it.
The discussion, uh, what I mean, the discussion that I had with the contractor, um, he actually said it's, it's really a horse a piece in whether we get in, in, you know, early winter or, uh, early spring, just because of the soft ground in the spring. It would hold the equipment back and it'd take them a little longer. Of course, the hard ground would take them a little longer to take the poles in and put the concrete in. But he said it's really kind of, you know, one-on-one for what time, what time of year you wanna do it. Unless it's in the middle of summer when everything's dry, um, it can still be difficult in the spring, so.
You're gonna send that back to MATA and have them brainstorm it or staff or, or Gary?
I suppose we give it to MATA for the fifteen dollars, six hundred and forty-six dollar, fifty cent budget.
We did brainstorm it though. Um, you know, one thing, I mean, I guess I would, I would really, truly like to see a billboard street. I think that it has made an impression, you know, especially when we started diversifying it with, you know, gymnasts, basketball.
We still do have one of the rest.
Yeah, which, you're, you're right, you're a hundred percent right, but I think people will sit more from our east-going list, so. I, I think, um, I think we sort of said something, you know, what is, what is a real big difference if you put a different area on?
Yeah, if I know what a billboard cost, I know they're probably fairly expensive, I'm sure, but.
Yeah, whatever it is.
But we're, you know, there's, there's other, um, permanent structure, concrete, brick or whatever, you have a boy going to, uh, his little sacas or something, I think. We have a nice-looking welcome to those tickets, I think it's a sacas.
Elbow Lake.
Yeah, Elbow Lake.
It's not a city of brain that does.
Maybe that's all we need. We need a billboard. Something that looks nice and probably costs twenty-five thousand dollars for that. Maybe fifteen, we could get a heck of a structure, a brick and stone for fifteen thousand, I would imagine. Maybe two of them for each end of the town.
The only thing, the only thing with, under that scenario is if we were to put a permanent type of structure, like, under that idea, uh, is definitely a valid idea. Uh, we currently have a lease agreement with Sterns Electric to use it for a billboard. So we'd have to go back to them and renegotiate something like that for some type of permanent structure. But so is a billboard, but that's a little, a little different.
Dollar here.
Yeah, we could try.
Okay. Where's your?
It's zero right now.
Oh.
We could pay more if he was, that's what it's, I deserve it. He just said he wanted to pay more for his, I heard it.
Usually there's some figure in there, not zero.
No, we have a really good relationship with them as long as we maintain it.
Is it possible just to ask, you know, just see, you know, I just want, you know, like, what is a, what is a crazy price of a digital billboard?
I don't know, but we can sure find out.
And then talk to MATA. And who knows, maybe we could partner with.
So do we just not take action on it or do we table it?
Just table it.
Table it.
I'll look to table for all.
One second.
Billboard reader?
First and a second, um, favors the aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Um, ice rink attendant?
Yeah, um, the, the Parks Board has reviewed the, the need for a, a skating rink attendant. Uh, historically, we've had a really hard time finding people to do that job. Um, but we've been lucky, we've had a couple of real good kids do that for us over the past couple of years. However, they're not able to do that any longer. Um, also, the numbers at the ice rink have gone down considerably. Uh, so it's the recommendation of the Parks Board to try to do it as a trial, not to hire somebody on for this winter, uh, but to allow staff, if needed, to go out and, uh, to find somebody to fill that spot if it does come up where there's a need or we're seeing damages or something like that. Under, since we're a statutory city class A, uh, meaning that staff cannot hire or fire staff, uh, without council approval. Uh, so what we would look for is the ability, if we, if it, if Gary Mittendorf and I, or if Gary Mittendorf did sermons that there's a true need for a, uh, care, a skating rink attendant, that we would be able to go out and, uh, and appoint somebody to fill that position if needed. But, uh, we don't anticipate that needing being a need, but since we meet once a month, it might make sense. And we've done this in the past where you give in staff the authority to appoint a seasonal temporary person, uh, based on a need in the past. But we don't think that for now.
Warmer house gonna be open then?
Yeah, Gary and the crew will be, as of right now, will be opening it up at one o'clock and then the police department will then shut it down at-
Nine or-
Nine or, nine or ten, depending on usage.
Will you be-
Weekends as well or do you alter weekends?
Gary, the schedule then for the weekends would be the same or probably be opened early on the weekends?
Yeah, we would set the schedule. We'd kind of look what we did in the past years and see how that worked.
What's gonna happen with all the equipment inside? Like when people wanna borrow skates and hockey sticks?
That's one of the risks that you're gonna accept, you know, by this happening, is that those things could disappear.
I talked to Craig a little bit and he said that we could possibly look at, just put the camera up there also. And this is kind of a trial type base.
Yeah.
What are we budget to pay a part-time person?
Tessa, what's the number? Are there shifts? Yeah, let's see. It's not shifts.
We had about sixty-six hundred budgeted for temporary employees. I think that was two, um, part-time skating rink attendants.
Well, that's just for skating rink?
Or is that the summer?
Um, we don't have any other temporary employees.
Just in the summer?
Yeah, we have the one summer. The, the part, the part-time seasonal worker out there gets, uh, oh, I wanna say it's about, uh, ten hours a week, six hours a week and the wage is-
I can't, that's not sixty-six hundred dollars.
No, that's, that's including the period summer help.
Maybe you could throw a camera up there for a hundred fifty bucks. Report some-
No, that was, that was what I was getting at was.
Yeah. Let me get a note that there's a camera. Put it right on there. Inside the warming house.
Yeah, we just think it's warranted a, a trial, but if we get damaged or there's significant loss of public income, then we would go and recruit that.
Do you have an inventory comment of everything that's up there?
We would, we would be able to get a lot. We would, we would be able to get a lot, just like helmets and skates, basically.
Do the city purchase that stuff in first place, or?
Just one.
Left there, lost there.
We do have numbers from the last two and a half years of the attendance, like on Sundays, for example, in 2016, the first, I think the third, there was quite a few people. Other than that, we had four people in the open rink and two people in the hockey rink. In the other three Sundays, for two weeks, there was two people skating on one rink and four on the other. And like I said, I have it all up here, if we want to see it. And a lot of the kids that came up were kind of affiliated with the caretakers, so they became friends of them. So, and when there's basketball and stuff like that, it's very, very small crowd.
All right, well then, can you get someone to make the motion to leave it in their hands?
I'll make that one.
Okay, can I get a second?
Second.
I favor CI.
I agree.
Motion, Gary. And then the memo of understanding between the city of Melrose and Central Fairhouse. Adam?
Good evening, and thank you for the addition to the agenda. What we're doing currently is, we're a part of three forty B program, which is a discount drug purchasing program. With that, we have to have a local government agreement that essentially you guys are agreeing and holding us accountable for using the funds that we save based on this program to treat the lower income, the uninsured and the uninsured patients. And we entered into this agreement back in 2011 with former Mayor Vogel's signature, and as part of our recertification process, we're looking to get this updated to the new government officials' signature on that document. The document itself hasn't changed, it's really just trying to get the updated signatures. Any questions related to that?
I think a big question that, that comes up in regards to, okay, the city of Melrose sponsors this, what's the actual liability for the city? Does the city, and I know the answer's no, but we want to hear it from, from you saying that the city doesn't, by agreeing to this, we're not going to have to pay a forty-two thousand dollar subsidy for subsidizing medical costs?
That is correct, there's no liability to the city, this is wholly on central care and any pharmacies that we work with, and/or actually even saying that it actually falls all back on the covered entity, which would be the hospital itself. This is really the commitment from us to the city and the city to us, that we are going to use those funds to help treat the indigenous people.
And one other thing too, is there a, is, and you and I hadn't get a chance to speak to this at all, is this a four-year MOU, is the term of the mayor, or is like, is that all that's done?
So, typically speaking, we hadn't previously had provided the government official's name as part of the recertification process, so the initial contract function throughout the process, now it's an annual recertification, so we will want to make sure that annually we at least have the updated government official, so it would likely run with the term of the mayor.
Being included added, I am, have you had a chance, Scott, to review the memo, or look at the memo, or do you want to, should you?
Is this, are the terms largely the same as what's already in place?
It's exactly what was in there before, it's, all they did is change the date on the agreement before. Not, this came before my, before my arrival, I honestly, I didn't even know about it until, until today, so. One of the challenges you said is that to receive this benefit, it has to be December fourth, you were saying?
Yes, the recertification process closes December fourth, and with this addition of adding the government official as part of that recertification process, that is rather new information that we're trying to get those documents accordingly. As I mentioned, historically, we've been able to see it as the original, and actually, as part of any audit that goes on with this program, they actually refer back to the original agreement more so than any updated agreements.
All right, can you get a motion to approve, please?
So?
Can you get a second?
Sorry.
I favor CI.
All right.
Thank you. Thanks, Adam. On old business, Fifth Avenue Bridge, Rock Arch Dam.
Mr. Mayor, this has been a lot of conversation over the past couple of months, and we have Nikki Blakeway from Bradley from the DNR here, as well as Mike Nielsen from WSB, to talk about a scenario that's come up recently that we've been asked to look at and explore, and we have some images and photos, and we'll just walk you through it here, and I'll turn it over to Nikki and Mike to discuss it, I'll be their PowerPoint guy.
I'm going to stand off to the side so that I can actually see the screen, because I don't have my presentation memorized, but, Mr. Mayor, City Councilman, Mike, good evening, and thank you for having me to talk about Rock Arch Rapids. Is the?
Yep. I'm sorry.
So, you can go ahead and move the next one. So, basically, what are Rock Arch Rapids? They're essentially a water control feature that replaces a dam and mimics the dam so that we have a more natural stream condition in place. There are multiple advantages to replacing dams with Rock Arch Rapids. One of the biggest ones that the DNR sees, of course, is this fish passage, because dams are structures that prevent fish movement, migration upstream and downstream, and of course, in the case of Melrose Dam, it's quite high, there's no way a fish could jump over that dam. But Rock Arch Rapids are a series of steps, and so the fish can actually migrate upstream by jumping each one of the successive steps, and within the step, there would be areas where they could rest, gather their energy, and then make the next jump. We see them as very effective and successful where they're in place. Water level control, you do not have to give up the elevation of the pool behind the dam when you have a Rock Arch Rapids in place. You can, you can certainly lower it, and that makes it, of course, easier for the stream to have more natural conditions in place, but we recently, within the last two years, replaced a small dam on Lake Sylvia, and all of the residents on Lake Sylvia were very upset, thinking that they were going to be losing water level, it was going to be low water, and we've not had a single complaint since that was replaced. The water level is monitored by the Sauk River Watershed District, and it has stayed where it needs to be. Providing a more natural amenity, you know, dams as structures really are very visibly man-made. They don't look natural, and so a Rock Arch Rapids, in some cases, if everything that was unnatural, man-made, was removed, oftentimes, you can't even necessarily tell that that was physically made and engineered once some of them are done. Aesthetically pleasing, many people love the way that the Rock Arch Rapids look once they're done. We've gotten a lot of positive feedback from people who say, oh, it's beautiful, I go out there and take graduation photos there, weddings have been done by Rock Arch Rapids, people have gone fishing and enjoyed the aesthetics of the rapids, and, and so, you know, it's just something that's actually pretty in place. Recreation opportunities, people can go fishing more readily, the fishery could be improved by the actual migration of the fish. Of course, it's photography, people love to go out and take pictures, and in the right circumstances, they can even be used for kayaking and whitewater canoeing. So, the Sauk River is actually a state designated water trail, and so if people were boating from, or not boating, I should say, but canoeing or kayaking from Sauk Center to St. Cloud, for example, they would not necessarily have the portage around this feature, depending on their whitewater canoeing capabilities, but it certainly could be an additional recreational opportunity for people. Low to no maintenance, that's a big one, because dams typically don't have to be maintained every single year, but when they do have to be maintained, it's a big expenditure for the city or the owner of the dam. Once a Rock Arch Rapids is in place, there's very little to no maintenance that's necessary. So, that's one of the biggest pros for that. The problem, well, I'll get to that problem next, but then, multiple partners would be willing to assist you with the process of replacing the dam with a Rock Arch Rapids. The DNR certainly would be a partner in a project of that sort. The Sauk River Watershed District has definitely expressed interest in being part of a project of that magnitude, and the Sonal Water Conservation District of Hurstons County has also expressed interest in lending a hand. It doesn't mean that we're the only agencies or groups that would be involved or be willing to partner with you on a project of that sort, but for certain, I know that those three are willing to be. So, the cons really come down to two. One is sediment transport. A river's function is to move sediment, and when you have reservoirs, that slows the water down, and, and the sediment settles out, and it can't continue on its path. So, the Rock Arch Rapids could improve sediment transport downstream if there was a slope to the water. So, essentially, if you lowered the level of the top rapids, then there would be a slope on the water, there would be more movement, and it would be able to carry sediment better. It's not to say that it would automatically clear up any sediment issues that there might be behind the dam, but there would be some transport where right now there isn't any. So, that could possibly be a pro, but primarily, it's a con if you say, we want to leave the elevation at the same exact elevation that it's at now for the spill over, so, so then there would be technically not really much sediment movement. And then, of course, the installation cost, that is a pretty significant cost, I'm sure it would be more than what your maintenance fees are, but if you look at your return on investment over the long term, which is multiple years of maintenance and operation of the dam, that's where I think you see the savings. This is an example of a Rock Arch Rapids that was done, and it was very recently done from the photo, because you can see that on both sides of the river, there was work that was done in the near shore environment, in the shore impact zone, and they are actively restoring those areas with vegetation. But essentially, it's just, it's just like a staircase, and each step is about a foot to maybe, maybe fourteen to sixteen inches tops, and that's so that we can get that movement of the fish up back and forth. This is an example in Hutchinson, Minnesota, where one has been done, and, and we feel that it's very similar to what the city of Melrose has in place. You can see that the original dam was here, just upstream of the Highway Fifteen Bridge, and there's a meander immediately downstream of that, and so, I'm not exactly certain what year that was done, but we did a project with the city of Hutchinson, and the next photo should show what that looked like.
This is construction.
So, this is during construction phase, and there are probably at least a dozen steps in that Rock Arch Rapids, and as you can also see, downstream, here and there, they have additional steps. So, that's to prevent the river from becoming what we call sediment hungry and scouring the bottom of the river and taking more sediment downstream. So, my expectation is that we would need to have something similar here in the city of Melrose. And then that's a picture also, once it's in place and the water is flowing over the top, and so it looks more like a rapids than a water control feature. I know that Mike and Mike Nielsen both went down to Hutchinson with some people and viewed the one that's there, and it sounded, so it was a good site visit. Okay, so, one of the things that I heard very clearly at one of the meetings that we had with Mike and, and your engineers, and Tony was there also, is that you guys need some help with funding, and really, all the funding opportunities are going to have to be grants. And so, I did a little bit more research into what kind of grants might you be able to qualify for and apply for, and of course, we've got the big ones. So, the Lard Sam's Outdoor Heritage Fund has to be habitat improvement, so that would be where you would be saying, we're improving fish passage so that they can migrate upstream and downstream, improving the fishery in Melon or Melrose Lake. The LCCMR is also more of a habitat restoration type of project. Clean Water Land Legacy Fund, that one is a big one that gets processed through the Border Water and Soil Resources, so the Sonal Water Conservation District and the Sauk River Watershed District are very familiar, actually, they're very familiar with all three of those, and would be able to assist with grant writing projects in there. The, the next two, I thought, were a little bit questionable, but, you know, when you're looking for grant funding, you don't want to just dismiss something out of hand, it's better to ask and be told no, because your situation hasn't changed at all if they say no, but if they say yes, there's more funding that's available for your project. So, so, I threw those in there, and just as a reminder, the Sauk River is a designated water trail, so that might actually help you qualify for the Greater Minnesota Regional Parks and Trails Committee. And then, we also talked about the dam safety program with the DNR, and funding being available through the dam safety program for removal of the dam. So, I called our supervisor of that program and talked with him, and he basically told me that they put out a list of priority projects well in advance of when a project would be done. So, 2018 is already, has already been listed and is on record with the Legislative Library. So, there wouldn't technically be any chance for funding through the dam safety program until possibly 2020, and that is if the legislature goes through a bonding here. So, so there's not really a lot of hope there for now. He told me that with regard to the dams and the list of dams in the state, that Melrose Dam is number forty-three on the priority list. The way that that could get moved up on the list would be to make it a high priority project, and one of those would be a full removal of the dam. So, if you were going to keep the gates and still put in the fish passage and, and the Rock Arch Rapids, it would be considered a low priority project, but if you were to take out the gates, take out the entire dam and replace it with a Rock Arch Rapids, then that would move higher on the list of priorities. He still didn't really have any kind of money available right now, but when you're number forty-three, moving up any steps helps for getting funding later. And then, he also said, did I forget something there? The grant application we have is available through, through, I believe it's just through our DNR website, and it's a one-page application, and they, once, they start acting once they get a grant application. So, they have to rank it statutorily, they have to rank the application based on what is the use of the dam, what is the condition of the dam, what is the chance of failure, what is the chance of damage potential to land downstream, that sort of thing, and all of that goes into categorizing where that is in priority for funding. Well, did you have a question?
Well, yeah, back to that funding, I mean, all that stuff we just, that's just relating to the DNR's dam safety program, and the forty-third out of. safety program, the 43rd on the priority list, right?
This part, where we're 43 on the priority list and to be able to move up on that. Now, the dam safety program can be a pretty significant source of funding for removal of the dam with association to putting in the Rock Arch Rapids. It's just that they've already done work for 2018, and he said, "I'm not sure when the next bonding session's going to be." It's typically not expected to be 2019, and we're hoping that it's 2020. The legislature could decide not to do a bonding session in 2020, and if that was the case, then it would be further out, further out for their funding. But just because our dam safety program doesn't necessarily have money right now for a project like this, doesn't mean that you wouldn't be able to qualify for funding through the other sources. And typically, I would say the big three, Lassard Sams, LCCMR, and Clean Water Legacy Fund, all really look at how many partnerships do you have, and are you shovel-ready? Are you ready to go? If you are, your project really gets bumped up to the potential for being funded. That oftentimes happens where they'll say, "This one's ready to go, this one they're looking at three years down the road, maybe we'll wait for a couple of years and fund the ones that are ready right now," because they want to get those projects on the ground.
So really, what you're saying is you have to make the decision without having, basically, without having the funds from a grant. Because you have to have your plans ready, you have to have engineering done, you have to be engineer.
It helps to have that in place. With regard to, with regard to your situation, your dam is so similar to the one in Hutchinson that you could almost, and I say this just without having the real expertise for engineering and all of that, but I would think that you could say, you know, "This situation is very similar to Hutchinson, these are the expected steps that we're going to take, this is the expected cost," that sort of thing. And that oftentimes, it just helps to have something in place. It doesn't have to be immediately ready to go, but if you just say, "Hey, we'd like to take out the dam and put in some Rock Arch Rapids sometime down the road," they'll say, "Okay, well, you don't have enough detail for us." Mike?
Question is, I guess if we go through the permitting process, the hydrology, the EAW, the CLOMR, and all of that, and just stop maybe short of the final plans and specifications, and indicate on their application that if funded, we can be ready to bid within three to four months, if that would be almost as good as being shovel-ready?
I think that that would probably, if you had everything else done, if you had the hydraulics done, you have the CLOMR, you have the EAW in place, they know you're serious about moving forward with the project. It's when people are hedging, like, "Well, we'll do it if you give us the money, but we're not, you know, we're not really serious about it." Those kind of steps do show that the city is serious about doing the project, and I think that you'd have a better shot at getting the grants.
When we talk about the grants, in your opinion, we go through this process, what are the odds of us getting a majority of this project funded with grant funding, in your opinion?
I can never guarantee grant funding, but there are certain grants, especially the Clean Water Land and Legacy Fund, where when those grants come through, they ask people like me in my position, "Did you know about this project? Did you help plan the project? And if you didn't help plan the project, do you support the project?" Sometimes actually having someone like me having help with the planning might actually hurt you in the funding thing, because then I would say, "Oh, well, she's biased. She worked on that one, she didn't work on these over here." So I tend to kind of take a backseat for, I know that the project is being planned, I absolutely do support it, but I didn't physically help with the process of the planning. And that can go either way. I had been involved in a project that we proposed to assist with fixing a trout stream in southeast Stearns County. And I was in a few meetings similar to what we, I've participated in so far with the city here and with Mike. And so we talked about the project, and then I kind of backed off. I knew that they were thinking about doing work on this trout stream. And then the request came in, "Did you know about this project? Did you plan, you know, help plan it, and do you support it?" And I said, "Yes, I know about the project." "No, not really." You know, I was at one meeting with regard to it, so I was informed that they're talking about this project. And then, "Do I endorse it?" "Absolutely. We need to fix this stream, it's got serious hydraulic issues and the trout are being affected." And it was shovel-ready. The landowner was willing to allow the work to be done. So it received funding. And between the time that it received funding and the time that we moved to start doing the project, the landowner's lawyer scared him and he backed out. So our trout stream is still impacted, it's still got serious hydraulic issues on that stream, but the funding did come through. So the SWCD is actually using it on a different project at this point because the landowner ultimately kept control of his land and wouldn't allow access. So the, you know, being shovel-ready kind of has two different levels of meaning, you know, how much work has been done already and what remains to be done. Next. So some of your options that you have for saving on your costs that would be associated with replacing the dam with the Rock Arch Rapids would be that you could include the dam replacement with Rock Arch Rapids under the EAW that you will have to do for the river realignment project that's being proposed. If you do that, there's no requirement, if the city were suddenly to say, you know, "We just, we aren't going to do it, we can't, we're just going to keep our dam," there's absolutely no requirement for you to take the step of replacing the dam with the Rock Arch Rapids if you put it in your EAW. The EAW is an environmental assessment worksheet that identifies all the potential issues that could happen from doing a project of that sort, which is the realignment and potentially the Rock Arch Rapids. And it's intended to inform people like me that are writing permits for the projects of the potential issues that are out there. So adding it to your EAW probably would save a pretty significant amount of money because I know they're expensive to put together, and if you don't do one, you're going to have to do one at the point of deciding to switch that out. But in this case, it would be automatically included in your channel realignment. You could include the Rock Arch Rapids in your hydraulics calculations and your subsequent CLOMR. You know, I've heard some pretty scary numbers with regard to FEMA and how much a conditional letter of map revision for floodplain mapping costs. And so if you can knock one of those out and have it all done together, that's a pretty significant savings I think for the city. You could include your Rock Arch Rapids in your permit request for the Army Corps of Engineers, because they will require a permit guaranteed for the channel realignment, and I would think that they would as well for the Rock Arch Rapids. So if that was all proposed together, then they would review it altogether. One of the things that the Army Corps of Engineers does have a fit about is changes after they've done a review. So if you propose the work under your Army Corps of Engineers project, and then you were to come back later and say, "Well, now we're going to do this differently," they would say, "We're going to start the process all over again, and we need to re-review that." They're not really big fans of it. But as long as the project is substantially the same and there isn't going to be any new discharge into the river, you could actually phase your projects. So you could say, "We're planning on doing this work, but we're doing the channel realignment first, and we're doing it at this point, and then we're going to do the Rock Arch Rapids afterward." And of course, your partners may be able to assist with some of the internal data collection or design and engineering. We have a river ecologist named Luther Oddlin who has done the engineering and design work for many of the Rock Arch Rapids that are out there, and he may be willing to be a part of that project. I had clean water staff tell me, "I'd love to be involved in that, you know, we could probably help with some surveying information or wherever we could assist, you know, given their timeframe, so, and their schedule." So, and I know that the SWCD has staff that could help with that as well, and the Sauk River Watershed District might be willing to assist also. So that's all for now. Thank you. Do you guys have any questions at all?
I have a question. Again, that Hutchinson project, what did you do with, you know, the water that was above there? Did you bypass that as you're constructing it, or how do you lower that level so you can construct that Rock Arch?
My expectation is that they put in some kind of copper dam, but they may have had a diversion channel. I don't really know, I didn't actually physically know about the Hutchinson project until I was telling our fishery staff that I was going to be going to a meeting with Mike to talk about the river realignment, and, you know, this would be a perfect time to be thinking about or talking about putting in a Rock Arch Rapids for fish movement and sediment transport because there's going to be a significant amount of material being moved. And they said, "Oh, well, you know, we did one in Hutchinson that was a pretty significant head differential." And then they sent me the pictures, and I'm saying, "We'll look at it." So I don't really have a lot of information about the project, and because Hutchinson is outside of Stearns County, it wasn't my project, so didn't have that, but certainly would need that.
And you're a representative from the DNR?
I'm the DNR area hydrologist for Stearns and Benton Counties, so I am the person who will process the permits for both the channel realignment and potentially the Rock Arch Rapids if you should choose to go that route. But I really encourage you guys to take a trip down to Hutchinson if you haven't been there. It's pretty impressive, and they don't have anything bad to say about it down there. So I've heard all good things. And I've heard good things about the other sites as well. You know, sometimes not hearing anything negative is really the biggest positive for a project. When you, you know, people are afraid of what's going to happen to their water levels, and then the project's done and you don't hear anything afterwards, okay, you know, they're fine with it, so.
Well, I was, I don't want to take over this, but I would, I'd like to propose a opportunity for you. In the fact that we have this Melrose Lake, which is the upper section of the dam, above the dam.
The reservoir.
The reservoir. And the reservoir is full of sediment. And over the last few years, they have discussion as far as ways of removing the sediment, and one of the possibilities was dredging, very expensive. So now, my proposal to you is this would be a perfect test site for you. Instead of dredging, is that we lower the water level to get it back to the river channel, let it dry out for a while, the sediment stuff dry out for a while, and take a bulldozer and push it up against the shoreline and replant the shoreline so that the chemicals supposedly that are in there can't leach out into the river, so that we would have a better reservoir for the fish in Melrose Lake. It would be a perfect test site for you.
Well, I can tell you that that would require a public waters permit.
Sure.
And I never tell anyone that they can't apply for a permit. I might say I recommend against it because there is a fee for reviewing a permit application, and it's non-refundable. But you certainly could propose that. The big thing to know is that we would not say you can open up those gates and just let it fly. That there is a dam operational plan, and the Melrose Dam is only supposed to be opening those gates six inches. And that's to prevent downstream degradation, and there has been downstream degradation from opening the gates too much in the past. So, you know, I'm not saying no to that, but do you think that your residents would be interested in losing their lake? I mean, that was the whole reason I heard, "We don't want to lower the elevation."
Short-term loss for a long-term gain.
Yeah, it'd be a short, yeah, because we'd build it back up, you know, the dam to the original height, so that we refill the lake to the original height, but then all the sediment would be pushed up against the shore and replanted and structured so it can't wash downstream.
You'd have to have an engineer design plan.
Well, I could do that.
And just remember that the Army Corps of Engineers does maintain jurisdiction over navigable waters, and they do regulate discharge, which a bulldozer automatically creates. So they kind of get a little bit stressed when they hear the word bulldozer. You know, shoreline restoration, they're totally behind, of course. There have been dredging projects done in reservoirs. Lake Orano in Shippensburg County did a dredging project. I didn't work for the county at the time that they did the dredging project, but then I worked for the city following that. And I do know that they instituted a lake improvement district in order to be able to fund or, you know, pay for the dredging project, and they had some local landowners who were willing to work with the city as far as where to place the spoils that they dug out. But dredging projects do occasionally happen, but they do require funds, and it can be a pretty big hurdle to get over, but I'm not saying no because I know that the DNR has issued a permit.
I'm just saying this would be a perfect place to test it, to see if it could be utilized in the future in other places.
The spoil material or the drawdown?
Well, both.
We are going to be doing a drawdown on the Mississippi River in 2018 in the summer next year of the Sartell Pool, and so it'll be interesting to see how things change as a result of that drawdown.
And I'm just, and I'm just saying this because I remember back when the dams were replaced, that the top section of the dam had a big crack and sectioned out, and the reservoir basically did drain, and there wasn't a river there, and all it was was a river, you know. And I thought, you know, that would be a good time to clean that out if you had something like that. And I think it would, it'd be a cost savings to the people around, I think it'd be a lot cheaper than dredging, and I'm just saying that in the cost sense of it to the city.
Well, I, I would look for an application to review, if that's, if that's the priority of the city.
Opportunity for you.
I hear what you're saying.
I'm good.
Could I consideration to approve the proposal for CLOMR and EAW? Can I get a motion to approve, or is there any discussion?
I see your P schedule here, Mike. And I guess what it comes down to is, we have two buckets, so I didn't see there, we have what we have now, or we're going with the Rock Arch and realignment of the channel. The bridge that we have now, that's shovel-ready, it has been on the list, what's the impact of the city? And then, of course, your crystal ball that you want to look into with potential grants, potential whatever, to do the Rock Arch Dam and channel realignment, along with moving that bridge into the north, you know, to me, that's what it comes down to is, as it knows.
Yeah, Mike, maybe help me out. I thought our local costs on the currently designed bridge were about $800,000, and that included the downstream underpass, the wider sidewalks, and all of the behind-the-curb amenities that the county does pay for. So ballpark, 800, I didn't review that.
Was it 950, wasn't it?
I think that was with retaining, so retaining all the stuff to fix that.
Yeah, it very well could be.
Yeah, exactly, that was 200,000.
It was 250,000.
Oh, with the craft wall?
Yeah.
Yes, sorry.
Yes, sorry. I think, I think just the bridge part was about 800 and then we're probably 200 plus on the cap.
Row number is a million dollars.
Yeah.
What we replaced, yeah, to do the retaining.
Under the current scenario that we're at.
Correct. And the crystal ball method with?
Well, let me, Nikki covered a lot of the things that I was going to cover, but I, I guess I'll run through it really quick if, if you're tolerant of another five minutes. So, we.
That's what Benny brought up.
Yeah. I'll start at the end and work backwards. So, our preliminary study was to determine if the bridge and channel could be relocated very, for a number of different reasons. Safety of First Avenue or First Street North, maintain the diagonal parking behind the 400 block, and allow the removal of the craft wall and actually building something there that's useful. The hydraulic analysis showed that we can do that without raising the 100-year flood elevation and we can shorten the existing bridge to a single span, removing the center pier. Again, that's the concept of the bridge, the channel, excuse me, the realignment. And again, the red or what would be the current abutments for the existing design of the bridge. So, again, this is where the craft wall is. This area would all be filled in, the channel would be shifted over and kind of realigned. We recently applied for a local road improvement grant. We met with the couple of individuals from Minnotches to review the bridge project and the project overall. They thought it was a great potential for the local road bridge. We partnered with the county to apply for a million dollars. The county engineer has agreed that the channel realignment would be the number one recipient of that grant funding. And the remainder of the grant funding would be appropriated between the city and the county. They didn't want to give us all the money, but I think we'll get a majority of it. So, next slide. Excuse me, project costs. For the grant application, we added in the cost for First Street North, the 400 block, which, which is going to be a city project anyhow, but to show a local cost share, we included that. We included the channel relocation and construction engineering. Just again, that's probably something that the county will provide, but we added, I believe, $266,000 for that effort, just to show our greater local match and hopefully improve our odds of getting that grant. So, that increased the overall project, including all the engineering permitting, channel relocation, bridge. Now, this is without the Rock Arch Dam, okay? So, we're back on phase one yet, I think, of the project, and about 4.2 million. So, next slide. So, again, the project costs, 4.2 million. The bridge is about 1.7, storm sewer, 71,000. The county roadway is about 475,000. And then in the county column, we included the 266,000 for the construction, observation, and administration. The city costs would be, so for First Street Northeast, 324,000, which was going to be our cost anyhow. And then the utility relocation, the water main, was 211,000, which is a utility cost. And the channel relocation, we got it about 843,000. And then the county has said that all the reengineering permitting for the new bridge would be at the city's cost. So, overall, we've got about 1.7 million cost for the city. And next slide. Which, and let's just gloss over the county costs, but we're, we're assuming that that channel relocation, if the grant is successful, would be paid entirely by the local road improvement grant. That would leave us about 156,000 additional grant money that would be split between the county and the city. I would argue that we're due a lot of that money. So, I, I, what that number comes out to be, if it's 100 for the city and 56,000 for the county, I don't know, but that would further reduce our cost. Where, if we're successful with the local road improvement, we're going to be sub, sub $1 million for the city cost on that. So, next slide. And again, a lot of this Nikki's gone through, so I think we'll just kind of wheel through this. Couple of pitches, Hutchinson. The feedback we got from Hutchinson was all very positive. They had some of the same concerns that our lakes association people have, and that number one concern was the lake level dropping. There was, the only concern that they think may be slightly justified is that during the spring runoff, the water leaves the basin quicker than it did with the dam because we've got a wider opening at the top. But, you know, so you've got that elevated foot for an extra, maybe one or two weeks less in the spring than you would normally have. But again, they said it was just a, a great community gathering space. And again, as Nikki mentioned, pictures, fishing, just people hanging out. So, their cost was approximately 750,000. I can't see that ours would be any cheaper. It, you know, somewhere between 750,000 and a million, I guess, is what we'd be looking for in grant funding on that. But again, without some cost analysis, right now, it's just a guess and comparative. So, next slide. Again, potential funding, Nikki covered that quite well. I think, you know, certainly the Sam Flussard, and I wouldn't overlook this. There's, this year is supposed to be another bonding bill, so I would talk to our state representatives soon and often, try to get in on that money tree. So, with that, I guess I don't know, maybe just flip through, Mike, I don't know if there's anything. Next steps, I think probably moving forward with the EAW, the CLOMR, the hydraulic analysis. In the proposal, we noticed that we had identified the cost separately for the Rock Arch Dam. The stream and channel hydraulics, the preliminary design, the Rock Arch Dam is about $2,400, adding that in. In the EAW, that'll only be about a $900 effort to address the Rock Arch Dam. And then the CLOMR, we figured that'll take about $1,200 additional to analyze the Rock Arch Dam along with the channel changes. So, to add in the Rock Arch Dam throughout this whole process of preliminary design, it's only about $4,500. Thinking backwards, I guess if, if for some reason the dam doesn't get funded, what would it take us to back out of this? The EAW, there really should be no change. The only thing that may change would be the bridge hydraulics a little bit. I'm guessing we're going to be somewhere in that $2,000 range, you know, to, to back those numbers out. So, this would take us through, we won't have final plans for all the total permitting. I don't know what you would need. You wouldn't need a final set of plans for the channel relocation, would you?
Before I issue the permit for the channel relocation, I need a final set of plans.
You do, okay.
I need to be signed.
Okay.
To ensure that no changes happen after the permit is issued.
But we could get to, well, I shouldn't say we could. Could we get to 99% approval with preliminary plans as long as the, nothing significant change within the design?
Generally, I work, all of my information, my findings of fact, my review, all of that comes off of draft plans. And with the expectation or the assurance that this is 99% of the way, we, you know.
Yeah. And the big issue isn't so much the channel design, but it's the bridge that goes with it. That's the, you know.
And that bridge has actually already been permitted. I went through, or at least the, the bridge replacement had been, so it would be an amendment to the permit that was issued to change the design of the bridge.
From the DNR?
From the, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. There would also be the Minnot.
Mike, when was this dam built?
Seventy-five.
What's the life expectancy of a dam like this that's built in seventy-five?
Well, I think their, Hutchinson had told us that their dam was about 40 to 50 years old and they were starting to get some significant deterioration.
And then we also asked the other question is what's the life expectancy of a rock arch rapids? And it's also about the same life expectancy.
If we were looking at a replacement of this dam in the next, just say, 10 years?
Yeah, and maybe 20 would, you know, I think at the outset, we could probably get up 20, 10 to 20 years.
And again, I know you don't know, you're not going to tell me the answer to this, but what would the replacement, one for one, before we have to?
Cost-wise? What was that? Yeah.
Well, Mike, probably, probably the correct answer is, is the state, well, one of the interesting comments we had, that we had during our, our meeting with Hutchinson is if, if we had a catastrophic failure of our dam today, they would not allow us, or Hutchinson, they would not allow Hutchinson to restore their dam to the way it was. And that they would either had to return it back to a traditional flow or do a rock arch rapids. That was a quote from their city engineer and environmental specialist there. So, realistically, we probably wouldn't be allowed, Nikki, is that true? That we probably wouldn't be allowed to put in its loose gate?
I can't make any guarantees one way or the other, but whenever we look at project requests, we have to look at the least environmentally impacting solution. And catastrophic failure with a proposal to restore the water elevation, the least impacting solution would be a rock arch rapids. Because then we would be able to restart fish, fish movement. But there have been a lot of conversations in the past with cities about completely removing dams entirely and restoring a river system. And, and there's been a lot of resistance, as you might expect, similar to what Melrose has said also with, you know, well, then we wouldn't have a lake anymore, you know. And, and so, it's not, Melrose is not in a unique situation at all with wanting to have water levels higher in the reservoir.
To answer your question, I'm not sure, but I'm guessing just intuition-wise, and I'm guessing it's going to be very much in excess of a million dollars.
Then Tony maybe asked this before, but is there any gut feeling on a project like this, what percentage of that 750 could be covered by grants?
Seventy-five percent is typically, like the cost of the project, 75% is typically covered by a grant and then 25 is put up by the applicant.
And the local man.
In some kind of a match. It could be all the processing time. It could be the meetings that have happened earlier. So, this meeting time for Mike and Mike and myself, all of that.
So, if I add all of that up, it's basically cost neutral on both sides.
Yeah, assuming that we can get our fair share of grant funding, yeah. Especially if we get the local road improvement grant and the dam funding, I think then we're, we're light years ahead of where we would be without EAW lease.
Tessa, what would you weigh each year for dam?
Ten dollars.
Ten?
And we've spent some of that down already.
And we just started doing that last year.
So, it'd be 900.
Thanks, Mike.
Yeah, and again, I, everything with this project, I think hinges on the grant funding. I think we've got a very good shot at the local road improvement grant. Obviously, it's not guaranteed, but again, I think we look at phasing, depending on how the funding comes in. Ideally, it would be nice to build it all at one time. However, I don't see any significant issues of building the Rock Arch Dam after maybe two or three years down the road, if and when the funding comes.
And if this year is indeed a bonding year, it would, I would agree with Mike when he says, "Talk to your legislators sooner rather than later," and get them on board with the EAW.
Yeah, it's a regularly scheduled. They were off a couple of years on the last one, so this is supposed to be a bonding year, whether they do another one right away or not, I don't know.
They just wouldn't be able to bond for the dam safety program because that list has already been published for the 2018. And so, that's why Jason was really telling me, if we're looking for dam safety money for removal of the dam, he's looking at the potential for 2020 for bumping up the project. But you could apply for grant funding now through them, it's just that they don't have any funding available. So, the other grant funding goal could be accessible earlier.
Do we put money in the retainable? Do we, yeah, that was a quarter million that we're, we don't have money put away for it, it would be central care, I mean, realistically.
Well.
That's how we would pay for that. I'm assuming some of this, if that 400 block state grant money, forwarded or extended, at least maybe the First Street North portion.
We might be able to work through some of those scenarios. It's, it's, that's, we're, we're having discussions with the state. Mike Creelman, Community Development Director, is having conversations with the state and it's, we may have a long road to hold on that conversation, but we're trying, we will be trying.
Get that Rock Arch Dam, we'd have something to, put a picture up on our billboard out there.
I think we put a hundred.
There's plenty of time for billboard.
Oh, yeah. The digital.
Mike, then one more question, last question, one more question. As you're talking about phasing this or whatever, this would basically be a T and M not to exceed type, style contract. You wouldn't bill all, if we ended up deciding to pull the pin whenever, it's just when the project is done, you're not.
Yeah, if we're, if we're one month into it and, you know, we decide, well, one month might be a little premature to decide that, but if we're two or three months into it, yeah, it's, it's not a lump sum, it's however the, as we go.
And are these not to exceed numbers?
As long as the scope, as long as the scope doesn't change, yeah. You know, if you look at the CLOMR, we've got a fair number of hours in there for responses to agencies. We hope not to use all that.
If the scope changes, you'll come back and tell us?
Yes.
And read?
Yes. And I would like to sit down clearly, maybe with a member in the council and staff and kind of go through and just catch everything that's going. For your protection and mine.
So, the action I provide consideration to approve the proposal for CLOMR and EAW.
And this is for both the channel realignment and the Rock Arch Dam?
Yes.
With the option to iterate, if we can't get our head around the Rock Arch Dam, we can go back just to the bridge and channel realignment under this permitting?
Phasing it?
Phasing it, right.
Yes.
It's going to be inclusive of the Rock Arch Dam.
Yeah, there might be a slight fee to go backwards, but I mean, we're talking a couple thousand dollars. We're not talking 20,000.
But the permitting will be valid, yeah?
Well, we won't actually have permits in hand until we, we're, we're going to have the 99% permits, so.
You're going to have the ultimate. I'll make the motion.
Can I get a second?
A second.
Okay. On FRSI, opposed, motion carried. Second part of the action, I provide consideration to develop concept plans for the Rock Arch Dam and to include our Rock Arch Dam in the EAW for the bridge project.
And those prices were noted as Mike outlined.
So.
Second?
A second.
On FRSI.
Right.
Opposed, motion carried. And we have personnel policy. And we have personnel policy on your repay.
Mr. Mayor, just before we go into that, I just wanted to commend the city council and the Mike Nielsen's and the Nickys and the Mike Creelmans and the Scott, everybody that was involved, Gary Mittendorfs that were involved in this conversation. Because from here forward, this is, the city is moving forward by making this motion tonight on realigning this, realigning this, looking at a new, positive, proactive, turning our faces towards the river versus historically rural communities have turned their backs against the rivers. So we're turning our faces and towards the river now. And so congratulations to the council for getting to this point. This has been a very long, long, long conversation. So congratulations to everybody that's been involved in this process. We still got a long way to go, but this is the point where we're moving forward.
We're only halfway done.
Scott, sit down, you can't leave.
He's going to try to sneak in.
We'll try not to get a little over. Pete?
Mr. Mayor, this is the, one of the final steps for our personnel policies as well as a contractual agreement with our collective bargaining units. The Public Utility Commission has settled their APSME contract within the same parameters in which the city council has adopted theirs with their LELS contract, with one exception. Through negotiations with APSME, the utility commission has made an adjustment to their personnel policy specifically relating to longevity, which would be at 15 years to, from 10 cents to 50 cents. And then once they hit 20 years, from additional 15 cents to 50 cents. Again, for a total of $1 for longevity pay. So roughly, that's 75 cents total impact to the employee who's here for 20 years of service. The total cost for this, for the city and the utility is just under $15,000. And that's roughly 60% general fund and about 40% utility fund, if the city council adopts this. The ad hoc committee is recommending that the city council endorse the same parameters which the utility commission has endorsed, and the utility commission is recommending the same. I'm also recommending that we change the personnel policy slightly as presented here. We had some verbiage within the contract, within our personnel policy, which called out supervisors differently than regular other full-time employees. And it just, I didn't understand why we did that back in the day. So what we're doing is, and plus the supervisor's longevity pay was about $3.50 different than the non-exempt APSME and as well as the LELS contracts. So I'm proposing just to cross that out altogether and to just, they're part of the regular full-time employees. So it's the same exact verbiage, an employee is an employee is an employee. So having said that, it's the Utilities Commission recommendation to have the city council adopt the same process in which the, for longevity pay, as well as to adopt the revised language as presented here.
Is there any, there's any questions?
So this is going to be effective across the board?
January 1, yeah, for only people that are at 15 years and 18 years.
Yeah, but not just the APSME.
APSME. If the city council adopts it, this would also, well, this would be, this isn't the personnel policy. So this would be for non-exempt, exempt, as well as LELS members. Because LELS members defer to the personnel policy. In regard to longevity.
Can I get a motion to approve?
I'll make the motion.
Can I get a second?
One second.
Home Affairs, AI.
Aye.
Close, motion carried. So C is the LELS union agreement and ASME agreement?
Alright, yeah, LELS contract, this is, well, this is within the parameters of what the city council has set before. We just need to formally adopt it now as presented, and so as presented within the agreements.
So approve the three-year contract for the LELS contract as presented first. Can I get a motion to approve?
So move.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Home Affairs, AI.
Aye.
Close, motion carried. Second one is approve a three-year ASME contract as presented, motion to approve.
So move.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Home Affairs, AI.
Aye.
Close, motion carried. Finally, on the new business, Chief Woody, would you like to talk about the fire department officer appointments? And congratulations on your new job.
Thank you. Hi, yeah. Kind of brings me back to my old city council days, sitting at a two-hour meeting here. But first of all, I'd like to thank you for the vote of confidence. We've had some long, rich history of chiefs in here, and I plan to continue that. So I can thank you for selecting me as the next fire chief from January 1. Big shoes to follow, Chief Kramer has done some good things for the city and has toured a lot of times, so hats off to him. That's it?
Thank you for stepping up.
Yes, no problem. With that being said, January 1, new officers are coming in. We had five candidates be interviewed. We narrowed it down to three of them, and I believe it's in your packet tonight that we'd like to have, proposing to have Joe Leese as our first assistant chief. He has about 13, 14 years of service on. Leon Felbert has about 18 years, would be our second assistant. And then our training officer would be Luke Blon again, who has about four years on, so. A lot of good guys, a lot of guys that are around here during the day, which helps out with the leadership, which is an important part for me, so. With that, I recommend these as your, as the officers for the next two years.
Can I get a motion to approve?
So move.
Home Affairs, AI.
Aye.
Close, motion carried. Good luck, and thanks again. We are on to the 2018 meeting schedule, is there any troubles with any of that?
Let me tell you which ones I won't be here for.
Well, Mr. Mayor and council, you know, we've always had it on Thursday nights. We can change that. You can change it to Mondays or whatever you think is right for you.
January 4th, the March 15th, the August 18th, I won't be here.
Okay.
Just letting you know. We could change those dates too, to make sure we get a few of the warrants, should be fine. Depending on what topic it is, I might ask the table, depending on how.
I'll talk to you.
Is Thursday still work for you? Thursday still good?
Thursday's okay.
Alright. Can I get a motion to approve that?
So move.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Home Affairs, AI.
Aye.
Motion carried. Information items, schools and conferences, utility commission meeting minutes, anything else? Motion to adjourn, please?
So move.
Can I get a second?
Second.
One second.
Home Affairs, AI.
Aye.